Let me call the Berkeley City Planning Commission to order for its regular meeting of Tuesday, May the 24th, 2016. Would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Smith, Murad?
Present.
Richardson, Shadle?
Here.
Buckler?
Present.
Pop?
Here.
Morell?
Here.
Tengary?
Here.
Burnett?
Present.
Now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
I'll second.
Seconded, made by Commissioner Morell, seconded by Commissioner Pop. Any discussion on the agenda? Take a roll call.
Shadle?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 21st, 2016, meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the meeting minutes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Murad. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Tengary?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 26th, 2016, meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Tengary, second.
I'll second.
Who's taking?
Miss Buckler? Yes.
Miss Buckler seconds. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, take a roll call vote.
Murad?
Yes.
Tengary?
Yes.
Morell?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Communications?
You've got a couple of sets of DDA minutes for your reading pleasure and information on the Southfield Master Plan, which you've got information on, and then Oakland County also sent us information saying it's their master plan is good.
Then I will entertain a citizen's comments. Any citizen who would care to address the Planning Commission on any topic not on our agenda may do so at this time. Seeing nobody rushing to the microphone, I'll close that portion of the meeting. And I guess we'll move right into the discussions that we have this evening. Ms. Fanson?
Item number one is discussion regarding proposed residential form-based code. Do you have a handout that was provided this evening? We thought would be helpful as far as talking points and slides and thinking ahead. And you have bullet points from my report. And we did talk about this at the joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting.
Uh huh.
City Council liked the idea of this. So it's, and if you are all ready to go, then the next step would be, as we talked about, an open house.
Yes.
Do have a couple of dates. I checked with the community center because I thought that would given, when we did the library, it was more of a day thing, and this is going to be more of an afternoon-evening thing, and I think that runs into problems with the library. And I think we may have a larger crowd for a short period of time rather than kind of the all-day open house.
Yes. Comments from the Planning Commission on this? On the dates? Let's talk about the dates.
Is June 21st the third Tuesday of the month?
It is.
Okay. June 15th would work better for me.
Okay.
21st is better for me.
21st would be better.
Touche.
Who's got the time?
I can't do the 15th. Did you say the 14th? 15th or the 21st. I can't do the 15th. Okay, so we've got three for the 21st, one for the 15th.
21st would be better for me, but I can make the 15th work. I just have to rearrange something.
15th doesn't work for me at all.
The 15th does not work?
Uh uh.
Oh, wow.
No, because I've got time, I've taken time off the previous weekend.
I may be able to make the last 15 or so minutes of the June 15th, or the June 21st meeting, but the 15th meeting, 15th, I could be there the whole time.
I've got one and a half for the 15th and four for the 21st.
Either one works for me. How about that for a?
Two and a half and five then.
Well, there's your quorum. I will keep you informed of my 21st status.
It's, it's hard to be everywhere at once, I understand.
So where are we looking at?
It seems like most of you can attend the 21st.
That's at 2:00.
It is.
At 4 o'clock, huh?
Four to seven was what we had talked about being the optimal time to get the most people.
Then I guess that's what we'll have to do.
Okay.
21st, I guess.
Or do you want, is July better? I mean, do you want to wait?
Six to one-half dozen the other.
Oh, okay.
I think it's better to get it over with.
Okay. I just didn't want to hold your feet to the fire if everybody was saying those two weeks aren't good.
Yeah. Doing the 21st actually gives us a little more time to get notice together for it, so.
It, it does, but again, if you all have lives.
Yeah.
I'm missing a fifth-grade band concert tonight, so I get it. I get it.
Okay.
So if July is better than, you know, but I figured it's better to react to dates than have everybody try and compare calendars and come up with a date.
We're going to run into the same issue in July.
Okay.
Well, we should, yeah, we're going to run into it, so let's just do it.
June 21st.
Let's go for June 21st and get it.
Okay.
4 o'clock.
So with regard to the format, Kathleen and I had had some email discussions about the stations. Generally, it's good to have it one person talking to folks. What she has found is rather than somebody recording comments, people can just, they have a stack of sticky notes and can kind of post-it note the different things, so.
We found that having it be in the open house format, then people can come and go as they please, or we can, you know, send all the crazies to talk to Amy while I get all the good ones to come and talk to me. But it, it's, it's a good way to give people that kind of one-on-one time, and if they aren't real comfortable talking, they can write down things on comment cards or on sticky notes and put them on there. What Amy passed out today is just some stuff that I had prepared a year or so ago when I was writing, helping you write the code, anticipating this open house. And so these are PowerPoint slides that we then mount on boards. So this is just a first cut of some plans for how we can present some of the materials. So gathering some of the images, and then you'll see these like personal profiles, because I was trying to think of ways to kind of communicate what the goals are of, of doing this, because I think we're going to anticipate people, maybe I'm being pessimistic, but I think we'll anticipate people being, why do we want anything but single-family homes in Berkeley, right? So let's try and personalize it a little bit and get people to think outside of their own personal experience and shoes. So having like an older couple, a younger couple, a single person, a family, just thinking that, you know, getting people to just kind of paint the picture of why, why we're trying to, to do this in the first place. So in addition to, if anyone has any reactions to any of this stuff, you know, I think as Amy wrote in her memo, really clearly outlining what the differences are and the changes would be. So on our map to really be explicit about what would be rezoned, which is just the limited parcels related to your potential new mixed residential district, and then be clear about what the new townhouse and duplex styles, where those would be allowed and on maps and taking the draft, some of the key draft language, and I'd put those onto boards, too. So yeah, just trying to explain why we're doing this. So if anyone has any other big things you think that would be important for us to present on boards, we, I don't think we need a presentation or a talking session. Sometimes we find having a little 15-minute presentation is good because then you don't have to say everything multiple times, but if we put enough stuff on boards and people read them. So we're open to suggestions, I think. I run little workshops like this all the time, so I have all the stuff for it, easels and stickers and sticky notes and pens, and having you all there to help answer questions and be advocates, if you can be there, would be very helpful. Have people sprinkled throughout the room, so, I don't know. Does anyone have any thoughts or things you want to make sure that we say and articulate in a meaningful way?
I think when we do the, the plan, when we have the plan and show where things are going to change on the overview of the plan for Berkeley, that's going to have to be very well and carefully put together because that's where the fun's going to come.
Uh huh.
The map itself?
The map itself.
Okay.
That's where the, that's where we're going to, that's where everybody's going to go, huh, what's this? And then that's next to me. I don't know that, what are we doing to Berkeley? And in effect, we are making some, we are proposing some major changes. They're not going to come all at once. They're going to come in bits and pieces, as I would imagine. But when people look at it and they look at, oh, that's where I live, and look what I might have next to me or within a short distance of me, they're going to, that's going to.
Yep.
And we're going to have to explain that very carefully.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Murad?
I think one of the best things to do, too, is in a lot of cases, especially when it comes to like the townhomes, it's going to require purchasing multiple pieces of property for a developer to do it.
Well, with townhouses, it's two.
Yeah, yeah, town, yeah, the townhouses duplexes, it's a little bit different, but.
Right.
But yeah, the townhouses, row houses, anything like that, you know, it's going to require multiple pieces of property, so a developer's going to have to be able to purchase multiple pieces of property at certain locations for it to work.
Right.
So that's one of the important things that.
Well, I, I'm, I'm letting you know, the developer has already done that and is kind of asking about this and sort of getting his ducks in a row. So it, you know, I, I don't know what will happen.
Okay.
I had those couple diagrams when we were first starting that I can resurrect that kind of showed the lot assembly and how it could work, so I can bring those back.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, I, I don't know how you fit it all on a board. I mean, I think these are great.
Yep.
For life examples, but I think, but then I think.
These would be 11 by 17s and four formal board is how I actually.
See, and I would have, I don't know, however everybody feels, I'd have a duplex-triplex board, and then I'd say, okay, this is what they could look like, this is how it could fit. And then we had some difference, we heard different things on where they could go. And then the same thing with the townhouse. This is what they could look like, this is how they could fit, this is, and this is where they would go.
Well, the thing on the duplex-triplex is just I haven't been here for your last few conversations, so.
So were we having, my understanding was they could be contextual throughout the city, duplexes and triplexes, and Kathleen remembered something else. Okay, they're all nodding at me.
Well, it was just what I had proposed, so it's fine if you want to allow them everywhere. Mine was a more conservative approach that, maybe we keep that in our back pocket, too, if we find that people are just absolutely angry.
You can always downshift.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh huh.
Just to allow them at key locations, but.
And, and we can let them know also that this is part of why we're doing this, is to see what the public reaction to this is.
It's not done, yeah, it's not.
It's, it's not done, we can scale it back of what we're looking at, or we can make it even more, you know.
And I'll have, I, I didn't do a mock-up because I wasn't, I, I just didn't think of that as far as the notification. It will, it will communicate that. I'm sure people will still worry, but it will communicate that it is just being considered.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Buckler?
Do we need to maybe address, because it's so fresh, the Harvard development and how that's a PUD versus part of the form-based code? I don't know if that gets too technical or sticky, but that's going to be fresh in people's minds on, and that, and that development going in, which kind of mirrors some of the examples.
Right.
I don't know if we need to maybe have a, I mean, does it matter that it was done under a PUD? Should we, should, could we have one of those on the boards, or I mean, would that, because that's something that they can recognize immediately?
I don't think, I, I think that's something very different than what we're proposing with this form-based code.
That's, that's the point, though.
It is different, but from the public's perspective, there's townhouses going into a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, and it was just happened a month or two ago, or two months ago, so.
So you're, so is your concern that, how did that happen before this got adopted, or is your concern?
Yeah, I wonder what the questions are going to be related to that. Like, will the, will, will that confuse the public on to how that process worked, which was much different than what form-based code would provide? And do, do we need to draw distinction from it? Do we need not to? Do we need to be prepared to answer questions on, well, these, you know, I had input on this and, you know, we had some opposition for it and much, and we had some support for it, but it, I, I just want to, you know, if I was the neighbor, I would want to, I might come in and answer a lot of questions, like why? Is, is this the same? Is it going to be different?
Yeah, I, I just not sure, yes, I think that will happen. I'm not sure how to address it at a.
Maybe if we.
To think about it. I didn't mean to come up with an answer now.
No, I think that's a, I mean.
It has to be addressed so that everybody understands how that process would be different than this.
I think if we talk about this as being a scale thing, too, and then it's a lot-by-lot kind of thing, and minor, small lot assembly, whereas that was like a big, like, like larger piece that was redeveloping all at once.
Four lots for that?
It was just one parcel, but it had to be over half an acre to qualify.
Right.
Parcel.
I mean, to, to that, and.
Tengary wanted to speak.
To that end, yeah, we did just also approve an apartment building, so I, I think that it's maybe not something that we need to present upfront, but just being prepared to talk about what can happen already and where, and kind of how this isn't really that big a change, you know, as far as what's permitted. It's just a more a matter of where it's permitted. And the, to a certain degree, the ease of going through the process, you know, without, you can do some of these things in certain locations without doing a PUD, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay.
Okay. All right, so do we like, so we're going to have a map station that we think everybody's going to be at, and then townhouse, apartment, duplex, single-family?
Uh huh.
Does that sound right? Did I miss anything? Okay. And I think, are there any other issues you, you see people, you know, this is what I see, but I'm across the counter from folks, I'm not at barbecues with them and whatever.
And I do like in this handout the examples.
Yeah, I think that does a lot.
Yeah, that's very important.
Yeah, I think the photos are great. And yeah, I think the, what I hear from folks are, again, the setbacks between the houses, the height I hear a lot about. And then, you know, of course, there's a, and, but I think, nobody's proposing to get rid of the prohibition on parking, so that is, that limits this quite a bit.
You mean the on-street parking?
The on-street parking, yes, that's what I meant, the prohibition during, between two and six.
Do we want to confirm, like, say that parking is all going to be accommodated onsite? I mean, do we want to come right out and say that?
Is that a strong enough issue?
I think so. I think so. I think so.
Yeah, I think that, I think if, if you don't confine parking onsite, then God knows, you know, where these cars will go. I mean, it's, I like the prohibition that we have right now.
It, it limits the conversion, certainly, compared to other communities, definitely. Okay. I had some ideas about notices. Do you agree with my strategy, or do you have a different idea as far as notification?
Like your strategy?
Absolutely.
Strategy, I think is good.
Okay. All right.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission?
Do we want cookies and water?
Huh?
I had another one, refreshments.
I think there should be refreshments.
Okay.
They're angry at 4 o'clock.
They're angry, they'll, give them a little bit of sugar and maybe they'll, you know, be happy.
Be angry there.
I, I believe in cookies. They kind of help when you have somebody angry. Okay, I'll do water and cookies.
Yeah, do the little bottles of water.
Yeah. Water and cookies. We'll do the notices as proposed. So we're going to end up with, I just want to make sure, we're going to have one, two, three, four, five stations, maybe six, kind of with bullet points. Yeah. Oh, that's a good idea. Okay. Do you need any of, do you need us anymore? Are you good?
I am good.
Okay.
I'll send you graphs.
Okay, that's cool. I just wanted to make sure we didn't, you know, this went faster than I thought. Okay. Okay.
Who's doing posters? Kathleen, you're taking care of all of that?
Yeah.
Okay. Are we going to, how are we going to define form-based code to these people? How are we going to, you're going to do something to?
Yeah, I'll show, I have some graphics and I have some very.
Why we're doing this sort of.
Yeah, intro language on what it is and why, and.
Okay.
What the goal is to accomplish, yeah. We have plenty of stock stuff.
Maybe like numbers or arrows showing people you should start here and move through.
Yeah, usually it will set it up that they'll feel the flow on how we.
Okay.
It's a big room, I'm assuming. Yeah. It'll be a big room. Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, item number two is discussion regarding ordinances regulating tourist homes. We had talked about this in January, I think. Two ordinances, one's the zoning and allowing tourist homes as a special land use. There are a few large question marks on some things that I'd be curious to hear your thoughts of. There's also a licensing ordinance, which I think is important. And you can see some of my comments and, or some of my questions in red, taken from other communities that have looked at this sort of thing. I have not heard back yet, as this was given, like I said, to the city attorney and the public safety director a couple of months ago, and I have not heard back from them. I, I still have concerns as far as staffing goes with this, so I'm not jumping at the chance to do more with the same one and a half people. So that's, but that's my concern, but I didn't want to, I, I know it's something that we've had on the list, and so I wanted you all to look at it and look at the licensing, see if, if any, there's anything that jumps out at you, and obviously I need to get with the city attorney and the public safety director.
Okay, so the city attorney.
Well, and, and the public safety director has, you know, he's very concerned about the this drifting into permanent housing.
Yeah, he, him and I had discussion on him, well, he approached me about it, so.
Okay.
Mr. Murad?
So the question I have for you, Amy, is you're, are you thinking that we need both of these documents?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Because the one thing that, you know, in, in reading the, the ordinance part of it, not the licensing part of it. My impression of a lot of like Airbnbs, and I just used an Airbnb this past weekend, is we rented the whole home, not just a couple of rooms. And you're restricting it to just a couple of rooms.
Well, this was what the city attorney had initially proposed and had chatted with council about it. They, you know, had some issues as far as the occupants per room. I know the ones that we have in the city, it's, you're renting a room and, you know, the people that live there are still there. I think that that was sort of where council was leaning towards, so you don't have an absentee landlord situation or bad things happening when the owner's not around.
So how, you know.
How do you enforce that?
There will be people, yeah, how do you enforce that? And then there will be people that will, you know, like, I've considered it for my home because my proximity to Woodward, knowing that there's people that come into town for the Woodward Dream Cruise, and I thought, I've got a house a block off of Woodward. You know, you can, I got a two-and-a-half-car garage, I got a driveway that you can fit another two cars into, and three bedrooms.
Right.
I could rent the house out for a week and get away from all the noise and traffic and everything and make some money. That's not covered in something like this. And it should be.
Okay.
I think it should be.
Mr. Chair?
Miss Buckler?
I agree with Mr. Murad because like home swapping is, we've done that in the past, where you rent their house, they rent your house, because they want to come where you live. I wasn't living in Berkeley at the time, but the, and when I typically rent Airbnb, I typically get the entire unit, whatever it is, an apartment or a house, or in case it was a boat. And always, now this has been my experience, always, I'm dealing directly with the owner of the property who drops off the keys and lets me in and shows me how to work whatever, and I'm not dealing, VBRO is different, that's a rental, usually there's an agent involved, but Airbnb is generally you're dealing directly with a property owner. So I, as a traveler, I'd have to be pretty comfortable to rent just a room where there's other people in the house with me.
Yeah, me, too.
I mean, it, it happens, and if I was younger, I suppose, but at this age, I want my own space.
You know, I know there are instances where somebody gets relocated for a job, and it's going to be a temporary six-month thing, and rather than trying to find an apartment, they try to find a room to rent. That would be more of the scenario.
I had friends who, their kid lost his lease and it took a month, they had to, they rented him something through Airbnb in between because it was cheaper than a hotel, and he, you know. It was, it, I think it's a useful tool. There's a lot of restrictions on this that I think are, I don't know. I guess the situation we have at hand is causing the heartburn that, well, requires 14 different requirements.
Well, I think the, the issue is, you know, we don't allow boarding houses in the city.
Right, right.
So when does an Airbnb, when you're renting a room on a vacation, suddenly become a permanent resident? And do you want to allow boarding houses? I kind of think there, you know, that was an era, and there were reasons, and there were problems with them, and that's why they're not allowed. You know, we have had instances, I was talking with our planning consultant, where, you know, we do require rentals to be licensed, and we do go into them. And we have had, not a lot, but instances where, oh, there are locks on every single door. And no, you cannot do that. You have to live together as a family unit. This is not, you know, on some college campus where everybody's got a lock on their room and you're sharing the bathroom down the hall. That doesn't, you know, it's a single-family residential district. So you live together as a family. So, you know, that is the slope that you're on, and that is the concern that public safety has with this is sort of a more transient kind of crowd that maybe isn't, you know, what everybody that lives in a single-family residential district signed up for. I think the fact that you prohibit the parking on the street is going to limit it. I think that's a very good thing, and that's something that with regard to the license and everything, I think we would want to see, because I can see this very quickly becoming something else.
Right.
I think you make good points about the whole house, and something that initially I had not really thought of, and it was pointed out to me, and I probably have said it before, and I apologize if I'm repeating myself, was the proximity of Beaumont Hospital and the fact that there's no hotels around. So if you're there for a long, you know, if you have a family member that's in the hospital, where do you stay that's close by? So I.
Or if you're on a fellowship at Beaumont Hospital.
I'm sorry?
If you're on a fellowship at the hospital.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking more of, I'm stuck in this town that I don't know anybody, and my loved one's sick, and where do I stay?
Beaumont may be fixing that. Yes. With the new Northwood development, Beaumont may actually be fixing that little problem. I'm not, you know. I believe a hotel is supposed to be part of that, yeah. Entirely likely.
More than likely.
In the meantime.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shadle?
I think I'd like to see the number of days increase to 10 within a 30-day period. I think that's still a reasonable number of days that allows for, you know, different sort of circumstances, as you mentioned. Typically, it may end up being five to seven, but I think 10's a reasonable number.
Two weekends. I have a comment on that, too, and having, you know, because just this past weekend, I traveled to Traverse City for a family wedding, and all of us were looking for homes to rent because hotels are so expensive.
Yeah.
And some of the townships in and around Traverse City just passed new ordinance that went into effect the beginning of this year, that you can only do monthly rentals.
Yeah.
So it eliminated the ability of people to rent their houses by the week or the day.
That's it, they're having a lot of issues with housing and accommodations up there. It's, it's a real problem.
Yeah. So, that, you know, some of the places in November that we were looking at, all of a sudden, when January came around, that we were now finally ready to go do, that we thought, oh, we had this place, this place, and they were gone. Couldn't rent them anymore.
Thanks. Well, and I know in some resort communities, they have ones that you can rent monthly, and then there are other ones that will only allow you to rent, you know, a shorter period of time or whatever. And so, they ha, they're set up for that, because they're a resort community. This is new to us, because we're not a destination like New Orleans or Key West or San Francisco, so. Um, but I think, you know, again, it was, there was a concern brought up on the part of a resident, you know, regarding just that the house was, you know, being used in a more commercial way than it probably was intended to. And so, the, the easiest thing, the absolute easiest thing to do, to allow Airbnbs, is to just strike tourist homes out of the prohibited list of home occupations and walk away. That's the easiest thing to do. If you're concerned that that will open up the door to boarding houses and whatnot, then, you know, there might be, you know, some other ways to sort of, other than regulating it through, you cannot, you're not allowed to park on the street.
Right. So, I'm getting the impression that this has all come up, because there are some people that are using rental homes as boarding houses.
No, I think how this particular thing came up is because I had a complaint regarding an Airbnb.
Okay.
And was asked, is that allowed? And I said, no, and then started doing some looking, and, oh, look at this, look what's going on, oh, okay.
You know, I mean, I haven't had one in my neighborhood that I'm aware of. I think we should be flexible, but try to control it, you know, so, you know, rather than somebody just being able to rent their home to anyone, one for a night, a week, a month, they should have to go through some process with the city, so.
Well, and I think, you know, the licensing issue, you know, on the other side of it, we have had, not with Airbnb, but, you know, the clerk's office received a complaint regarding an Uber driver and had phoned the state, and of course, it's not regulated through the state, and this is, you know, maybe a year ago, so it was before terrible stuff that happened in Kalamazoo. But I don't know what had happened with the Uber driver, and so she was told, this person that was complaining about the Uber driver, who was in Berkeley, apparently, she phoned the state and the state said, we don't regulate it, you need to check with your city and see if they do, and so the city clerk was telling me this, and I said, yeah, you know, that's the thing, it's all really good until it's not, and then-
Yeah, up until what, twenty years ago or fifteen years ago, we didn't allow taxis in the city.
Right. Well, a taxi company.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you have car service that picks you up at your house when you call Metro Cars.
Right, but Metro Cars, if Metro, if the driver is not, um, appropriate in some manner, you can call a company, and you can deal with the company, and they're licensed wherever they're licensed out of.
Well, you can complain on Uber. Oh, yeah. In fact, you can't book your next trip until you rate your last driver, and then there's a whole nother function to complain. Oh, no, 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 that's, you can complain. And they take it seriously. They, they do.
I have-
Mr. Chair. Oh, I'm sorry, I had one more.
I have a question, and maybe, Ms. Buckler's not sure, familiar with this. You maybe have the answer, and maybe Amy doesn't, I'm not sure. The question I have is, when you take and you rent these out or whatever you do, what is, how does your homeowner's insurance get affected by this, or do you tell them, or what?
I don't know. I mean, my personal homeowner's insurance would, I guess, cover guests in my house. I suspect it wouldn't cover if I was making money from it, but I suppose you could get a rider in some way, shape, or form, I don't know. The, again, I've always dealt directly with the homeowner when I've rented through Airbnb, and now, and I've used VbRO as well. Airbnb is a little bit more transparent, and there's a trail, you know, and the money, you don't change hands in the place. I mean, it's all done, you're paid in advance, so there's a record of all of that. And, um, kind of like Uber, there's a record for all of it. But the, I suspect that you would have to deal with it, or there's a release of liability, perhaps, when I sign up, I, I don't know if I've read the-
You don't have to.
Terms and conditions. Well, if you rent through it, then you accept their terms and conditions, just kind of like when you use an app on a phone. I could look it up on my app and see, but I suspect I'm releasing them of something by renting it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I don't know.
I don't know. We can find that answer very simply through their website, I suspect.
Actually, I might be more concerned about the terms of my mortgage.
Oh.
That could be just as, just as prohibitive.
Yeah.
Like the places I stayed at, nobody-
I never thought about the mortgage.
There's no mortgages. Like in foreign countries, there's no mortgage on them, or the boat I stayed on, but. I just booked a place today through Airbnb up north.
Life is full of risks.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I would think if you're owning a home to do something like this, you'd have, you know, some sort of, you know, what do people do that rent their, buy a house to rent it? They have probably a special type of-
You do have a special policy. You have a renter landlord policy.
My, my mother-in-law's got a policy for her own.
I have a rental home.
So, that's probably what you would have to do. Your insurance company would want you to do that. You know, if-
I have one-
Issue about the mortgage company, that's interesting, Tim.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Buckler.
Could we allow the renting of an entire property for maybe a limited number of weeks a year under this? Like, if we, if Tim wanted to rent his whole house?
I have leasing whole house should be allowed. I have that noted.
Oh, you do, okay. So, I mean, maybe there's a limit on it by the number of weeks.
Maybe you can only do it five weeks out of the year.
Something like that, yeah.
You know, or a couple of months out of the year. And then put in there that it has to be done on a weekly basis, rather than a minimum of a seven-day stay. And no more than a certain number of days, because then it becomes a rental, you know, a rental home. And I think really, in some ways, you should treat these like a rental home.
Well, and that's why I suggested the licensing, and, and again, you know, I, I was looking at what other cities have, and, you know, my concern again is if, um, you, you know, we're allowing these, I think there is, while there's a certain amount of, you know, you need to be a good consumer. If you're staying at somebody's house, I, and the city has licensed it, I feel like, you know, we do have some responsibility to make sure that, you know, we're not setting people up for some really terrible things. So, um, again, the, so that's a lot of the licensing, is trying to get at that, and it, it's modeled on our, um, rental housing ordinance, or housing rental property ordinance.
So, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, Airbnb has the host protection insurance, which acts as the primary insurance and provides liability coverage to hosts, and where applicable, their landlords, subject to certain conditions, limitations, and exclusions.
There you go.
They've thought of everything.
It's like the same with Uber. Uber probably has to have, have to have-
They have separate car insurance.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Next steps.
Um, I will go back to the drawing board with regard to whole house and chat with the city attorney and public safety director, and I'll get back to you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's a good discussion.
So, now I'm down to citizens' comments again, and I don't see any residents rushing up to the microphone. So, I guess we'll run around the room for liaison reports. I'm not sure, Patty, do you have anything for?
Um, the minutes to the last DDA meeting was Wednesday, May eleventh, and they're in the packet.
Okay. Anything from the chamber?
Uh, well, I know we, I never reported from Wednesday, April thirteenth, and I missed the meeting this month, so I had something last minute come up. So, I can say that, uh, the Art Bash is coming up the second Saturday in June.
The eleventh, yep.
And, uh, they have actually, uh, registered a hundred and ninety-four people. They, this year is the first year they've done online registration. So, as of April thirteenth, they had a hundred and ninety-four artists registered, and they only have a hundred and fifty-six spaces, so they will be filled. So, there's gonna be some artists that are not gonna be able to, but be able to display their wares. So, it sounds like it's gonna be a, uh, big success. Uh, they have a golf outing planned, September twenty-third is the tentative date. And, uh, they're continuing work on what they're calling the Oakland County Irish Fest, September tenth. So, that'll be from noon to eight p.m.
That was before council.
Yeah.
They were before council. They were before council. Was it last week or the, yeah. Never before council. That should, sounds like that might be interesting.
Yeah, that'll be interesting.
They're gonna close off Twelve Mile Road and block it off and have all kinds of stuff going up and down the Twelve Mile Road.
Should be, should be an interesting event.
Kind of like the Art Bash thing.
Correct. Yep.
The Art Bash. See, is there anybody else I have to report to? Okay. The Coolidge Highway Committee, the mayor has approached, has asked me to appoint two people to the committee. And so, this side of the table hasn't done very much. The table's got so much going. So, I contacted Mr. Tangeri and Ms. Buckler, and they both have volunteered their time and services. I submitted it to the, to Darcelle. The mayor had it at the last meeting. You're joining our new councilperson, because he appointed the, our new councilperson, as-
There's a trend here.
Yeah, there's a trend here. We're bringing all the new people on board for this little, so it should be interesting. So, I'm not sure who's coming from the DDA. I haven't heard any comments. I don't know, have you heard any?
There was some question on, how much time are we looking at? And so, Councilmember Blanchard, who's chairing it, said, in, in response, you know, I don't know yet. I imagine this committee will meet for at least a year.
Yeah.
And probably once a month, and so that was, you know, that was the last email I had seen.
So, anyway, we'll get a report from this side of the table here.
There you go.
As we move along. So, city council last, at the last meeting, um, they, uh, recognized Tina Edgar for her service as councilperson, and then we have sworn in our new council. Maybe you'd like to say a few words, I don't know, to the planning commission. I think you've introduced yourself, everybody, Patty.
I introduced myself to half of you, and the other half, they came a little late. I'm Colleen Gravlin. It's very nice to meet you, and I'm pleased to be here and take over for Tina. She's told me how fascinating this is, and after my first meeting, I agree already, so I look forward to working with you all more closely.
And we welcome you to our meetings. Tina fit in quite well here. She was very well. And at every council meeting, she always talked about the planning commission, so, hey, maybe you'll carry, you can carry on for the, for us, it's there's stuff we don't say or do. The big item, of course, was the, uh, parking for Vincenta Garage came before council. And surprisingly, there wasn't a room full of people. Only about four people got up and spoke about it. And of course, naturally, they, the same issues they brought up that we heard about the overall concept of what was going on, and they felt that there should be a plan in place before we proceed with all of the other aspects of it. The city attorney tried to explain state law to them.
Right. Unfortunately, we don't have control.
Unfortunately, we don't have control, so, state law. So, that, and council approved it. So, it will, goes to the second reading. Now, is there only one meeting in?
No, there's two meetings in June now.
Is there gonna be two meetings in June? Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah. It used to not be that way, but now it is, because January only has one meeting, and so does February, so.
So, okay, so there will be two meetings in June, so we have a meeting on the sixth, is it?
Yes.
Sixth is the meeting. So-
The twentieth.
Sixth and the twentieth. So, those were the issues that were, I think, the big stuff that came before the council that you've, we've, are directly involved with. And, um, and then, I think that's about all I need to say. Did I say enough? Thank you. See, she can double-check me. Tina used to double-check me, too. So, with that, I guess we'll run around the room here and see if anybody's got any comments, and then we'll go from there. Is Pop anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Nope. Feel a little lonely without her, two members.
I know.
I had gotten an email. You got it copied from Marty's email, in fact.
And Mark, they both emailed.
Yeah, we knew that they were. Marty wasn't sure, and, uh, so. Nothing tonight?
No, nothing else.
Mr. Morrell?
I'm speechless.
Ms. Shado?
Um, the only thing I have is, I believe that the Berkeley Fall Tree Program is in full swing, so take advantage, get your fall tree orders in, and, uh, let the city install them, because it's the greatest thing in the world.
Ms. Buckler?
Everybody have a safe and patriotic Memorial Day.
Mr. Tangeri?
Uh, I did have one thing I wanted to bring up. I have noticed across Woodward, uh, recent proliferation of extremely obnoxious lighting up signs, electronic signs, like, really bright and not dimming at night, and I just kind of wanted to put it out there that I've noticed, and I just want to be a little vigilant about.
But across Woodward.
On the east side. Yeah, Crosswood, on the other side of Woodward. Yes, on the-
Come through our lighting ordinance.
It's, um, I just wanted to put that out there, that, um, I'm glad that this side of Woodward isn't going to be looking like that.
It's very different. Uh, I know years ago, uh, when the Woodward Avenue Action Association was much more active, and they did a sign analysis, and it was really kind of startling the difference between the two signs.
Yes, it was.
I've just noticed that recently, it seems to have just-
Really different.
Taken off, so I just wanted to note that I'm-
LED technology, something, isn't it?
I'm glad we've looked at it, and, um, yes, we should just stick with what we've got, uh, and otherwise, happy Memorial Day.
Ms. Vanson?
Uh, just wanted to let you know, our new city manager, Matt Baumgartner, is starting Tuesday, the thirty-first.
Great, congratulations to him. On the thirty-first. So, then he gets sworn in on that council meeting on the sixth. Has he?
Sure.
I don't think he's sworn in. I think he's, he's hired.
Is he just hired?
He gets sworn in at the clerk's desk.
Does he? Yeah.
Okay.
Having worked with him in Lathrow Village, I can say he's a good hire. He's, he was very good to work with over there, so.
Good, looking forward to it. All right, I don't have anything else this evening. I just want to welcome our new city councilperson to our, Colleen, welcome to, to our meetings. And we hope you'll share if any ideas that come along, you know, can hand some, talk to us. Sure you can. Yes, you can. Well, if you got anything, you can, I'll let you come.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you a crash course on form-based code, so you can, on the twenty-first, you can be there, too, uh.
So, with that, then I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Murad. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrell. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
Dark contrast to last month, wow.